Good evening, welcome. This is our last town hall meeting of 2022. And we appreciate you coming out. Sort of format as usual, I start out giving you some comments on what's going on in the county and then we open it up to any questions you have. And you can ask a question about anything, anything we've talked about or not talked about. And this is a just open mic night basically to talk about what everybody's interested in. Uh, I'll do a little more talking than normal this time, just because we've had a lot of things going on over the last couple of months. Uh, first thing I want to mention is T-Splas. Thank you very much for the passage of that. Uh, the numbers were a lot closer than we'd like to have seen them, but we do appreciate the opportunity to take these funds and work on our transportation system. And we're, we're going to do a good job with it and uh, do what we said we were going to do. We are actually right now looking at different paving methods to implement into our paving program. And then sometime in the first quarter of next year, uh, we'll vote on our five year strategic plan for paving uh, based on decisions that are made on any new methods we might try to implement. We currently have five intersections under uh, five intersection improvement design underway right now. And once that is complete, the design firm will rank each intersection on their, how they've see the priority of getting those done. And then as the funds are collected from T-Splas, we'll start working on those five intersections. Um, a trail master plan's in process right now. That's being done by the regional commission that went before our recreational affairs committee uh, last night. I believe, yeah, last night. And uh, they've put some, had some input and comments there. So those will be uh, incorporated into the master plan draft. And then we'll have some public comment opportunities on that uh, in the near future as well. Hog Mountain Road design is currently underway. They're finishing up their uh, Q and A on the qua- our quality assurance on the surveys preliminary engineering will start later this month. And final plans are expected in the second quarter of next year. So we'll be, we'll start collecting money April of next year. And the one mil rollback will be effective for your 2023 tax bill. Our Parks and Rec Department, uh, we had two people honored at their district seven meeting. Uh, Ramon Hunter was facilities and grounds professional of the year. And Tyler Hartzog was our programmer of the year for, for that area. So if you see them, tell them thank you for all their hard work and participation. We have two openings on two of our citizen committees. That, that applications will be taken through Monday. Uh, that's for the IDA and also for the farmland preservation committee. Also, there's an invasive species removal at Heritage Park. So if you've got some time on November 22nd, December 6th or December 20th, be sure to go out to the park and help with that. Another big item is our broadband project. Uh, they are still working on it. Uh, they figured out where they're going to put the main trunk line, which is near uh, Farmington. And it'll branch out from there. There'll be 28 separate or smaller projects within that. Uh, we don't quite have all the timeline worked out. We hope to have an update at our December 6th meeting and have a little better on the timeline, but uh, they're working on permitting. Design's done on most of, a lot of the projects. So we should see some dirt turning before end of the year. And uh, so that's really exciting. The Farmington area will be the, where the trunk line goes. So the south end will be the first leg of that project. They've also have a contractor that they've contracted with for installation of the line. And they will be dedicated to Oconee County until that project is finished. Uh, we had a strategic planning meeting on October 27th, 27th. So if you, we did, we, we covered a lot of items during that timeframe. And one of the first ones was, was Parks and Rec in our, in our master plan presentation and discussion. So in the back of the room, you'll see some draft master plans for the park. Uh, each park, some of the parks have, we already have one for a master plan for OVP. So it's just kind of updating uh, what's there now and then what's going to be continued. A lot of these came from input that commissioners have seen. Uh, I have received from the community and then also Lisa and her staff, based on being on the boots on the ground every day. They get ideas about how things should go and they're getting input from citizens as well. Um, so that's where these designs came from. We got with a design firm. Um, and they placed out all these things on the, on the maps that you can see. From there, it was presented to the recreational affairs committee. Uh, they're in a comment period now that will be incorporated into that design. And then we're going to go out for a public comment countywide. We hadn't quite figured out uh, the strategy for doing that, but I would anticipate some more town hall meetings on those as well as uh, our surveys recently have been, been very successful in getting participation. And then um, we'll do some direct uh, uh, contacting folks, uh, trying to get some information. So, so the biggest one is the land application system, which is on Rocky Branch Road, which is currently a basically a sewer treatment uh, above ground sprayed field. Uh, that will be decommissioned over the next few years. Um, and be converted to a park. OVP, the big update there is adding additional tennis courts. Um, we've been trying to add tennis courts there since the 2004, when the park was created. And it was in the Splos for 2015 and then uh, yes, in 2015, we didn't have enough money. It was like in the top four for, for being completed. There was not enough money to reach it. So it was continued on into our 2021 Splos, which we're in now. And so that's our number one project on Splos for Parks and Recreation is to complete that uh, part of the master plan. Pickleball has been a real uh, growing sport in the county and also nationwide. So our plan is to, we're supposed to add a 10 additional to OVP, but we're going to add 16 courts there. And then what's at Herman C. Michael Park will be converted to pickleball. So there will be at least 12 outdoor courts with eight of those having lighting. And then they, there may be an opportunity to put more on those back courts, but we know we can get eight on the back. And then we got four out at the uh, front end. So that's really the big change at Herman C. Michael is becoming the pickleball. There'll be some, we want to do some improvements to the parking lot and the traffic flow there. So if you, if you've been there for events, you know, it gets, it gets tight getting in and out. And then Bogart Sports Complex, there's not a lot of room to do anything additional there. We're just going to be doing improvements uh, with again, parking and, and traffic flow at that location. So what, once the drafts are completed, we get public input, then these will come back before the board to be adopted officially. Oh, Heritage Park, this one. So we do have a map of the Heritage Park trails and um, Amanda's working on a master plan update for that. Uh, she's got some drafts. She'll be presenting that to the recreational affairs committee first of next year. Uh, so there's more to come on that. We just really put something up showing you what exists there now, but uh, that is on the, on the agenda to, to look at that park and see what improvements we can make uh, there. We also looked at a water um, wastewater master plan and a drinking water master plan at our strategic planning meeting. We have those maps posted on the uh, website where you can look at where existing lines are and what future lines may be added as time comes along. We also talked about our facilities and with the constructions underway now on administrative building. We expect that to be completed next year. Um, sometime in July is the scheduled date. With supply chain and weather conditions, that may or may not hit. Um, with that, we'll be vacating some buildings over the next several years. One of them being the uh, the government annex. Uh, the library that exists on Hog, on the experiment station road now will be vacated. Uh, we hope to combine our fleet, road department and facility and water resources, field crews into one building. So we'll be able to get rid of some additional buildings. So that, that's our plan now as we consolidate and move out of buildings. We will be uh, moving towards surplusing those buildings, getting them back on the tax roll and back into private sector use. We're looking at some UDC changes, just our normal process of doing that every year. Uh, also looking at possibly changing our inspection process program. Right now, all that's handled through the, the government. Like you come in, get your permit and then inspections are done. We contract out with an outside group to come in and do those. We're looking at a way to kind of get us out of that middle section and allow the private sector to uh, do the inspections and um, kind of streamline what we're doing in that realm. We also had a financial update and probably one of the bigger ones was our homestead exemption. So right now there are three senior homestead exemptions. Ones based on income or two are based on income. And then one is a freeze of your property taxes um, at age six or, or your assessed value. I'm sorry. Your assessed value freezes at age 65. Part of the problem with these is you have to know they exist and you have to come in and apply for them. So you, you come in, have to fill out forms and then that ties tax commissioner up with verifying your information and getting it all set up. In talking with the tax commissioner, we believe we can make these automatic. She has the data now and the, the software to track your age. When you're applying for your original homestead. So we're look, the things we talked about doing, we're at age 65. Do an automatic freeze of your assessment. The income related assessments will disappear. If you currently have one of those, those will continue out until you're no longer eligible for it. Um, and then we're looking at right now, our current exempt, homestead exemption for everybody in the county is 2,000. We'd like to look at taking that to 5,000. And then at age 75, giving you another $10,000 homestead on top of the existing. And as some of the other, the income based ones will roll off as that happens. Uh, we don't know how quickly that will happen. So in 10 years and 20, if we can get these implemented in 2025, then we'd like to have it so 2035, it would automatically go. The 5,000 exemption will go up another 5,000 to a total of 10 for every homeowner with a homestead exemption. So that's kind of what we've been working on the last uh, few months and now it's your turn. So if I didn't get anything, you, if you want to come up to the mic, if you just tell us who you are and where you live, it's your opportunity to, to speak.
I think you can hear me without that. My name's Wanda Stitt-Godis and uh, my husband and I live in the Canyon Creek subdivision. And I have the privilege of chairing the board of directors of the Oconee Area Resource Council. And I'm just here to say thank you very, very much for your continuing and very generous support to the programs that we undertake to serve only the residents of Oconee County. Thank you.
Um, so you, I have the opposite problem. So um, you guys know me. I'm Amanda McCoy. I grew up and I live in Oconee. Um, kindergarten all the way through uh, graduating. In 1999, I'm here to talk about Heritage Park, as you mentioned. Um, in 1999, when the Oconee Warriors won the state championship, I was the warrior princess. My mom and I hauled my paint mare out to Heritage Park Arena. So Igor, a Russian vaulting and acrobatics horse trainer could teach us how to bow for the, for the championship. In 2003, we had an uh, Oconee County High School FFA horse show team. When I was in college, a few days, years later, my little sister begged me to coach a 4H mounted drill team. We won third in state. I had to pick up half the team and haul them myself because um, their parents didn't have a trailer or, you know, who knows? We practiced in Heritage Arena every week for three months. This weekend, in a conversation with my favorite high school teacher, I learned that Heritage Park was named so because it represented Oconee's agricultural heritage. Oconee has a legacy of farming and our youth are missing out because they don't have a safe facility to use. When my husband got out of the army in 2016, we moved home and I started teaching and training horses full-time at my family's uh, farm in South Oconee. I kept having the same conversation with my friends. Man, those trails are really nice at Heritage, but it's a pity about that arena. Someone should do something about it. So I started to look. I didn't find one person. I found a whole community who wants something done. But I made a mistake. Um, I worry that I let you guys think it was just me that wants these um, the safety and maintenance improvements. You know, that crazy horse girl's here again. Um, maybe me and one or two others anyways. Um, the last time I was here, uh, you effectively told me to sit down because things cost money. We know how much it costs. We know how much the arena need, what the arena needs, and we know the equipment and the education the staff needs to maintain the taxpayers' investment. We've been working on this for years. We know there's a demand for the use of the facility. We have plenty of letters of support and blessing. A few miles down the uh, 441 Morgan County Ag Facility is fully booked for next year. And if I'm being honest, that, that facility is not as nice as Heritage. Just needs some work. I'm not here to give you all the details of the proposal. Now, as you said, we're working with Director DeVal and um, look forward to presenting to the rec board in January. And they've been very, all of you have been very supportive. You know, uh, we also know the impact it will have on the local community. Since I was worried that y'all thought I was the only one that wanted this, um, I've asked a few members of the community to come and just talk about their opinion um, and their thoughts. Um, I do have, I would like to close if that's okay. So if you, if, is there a time limit? No? Okay. Great. Y'all know I can talk forever. It's over at 8:30. I'm just kidding. Um, anyways, so if we, if anyone wants to speak.
Yeah, I'm Jean Barstaddy. I live on Oliver Bridge Road and I'm a crazy horse person too. But I also want to say I'm on the board of the Oconee Parks Foundation, which is brand new. We just got our 501(c)(3) this year. And part of our goal is to support the, our mission is to support Parks and Rec. And so we're really happy with all those maps and we just want to charge forward and raise money to support some of these initiatives. Um, working with Director DeVal. And so if you want to go to our Facebook page or our website, Oconee Parks Foundation, and if you want to make a donation, we're ready to accept such. So uh, thank you for that. On the horse issue, I'm a member of the horse community and yes, we would love those changes to the, to the arena so that we could have move our local horse show, which is at the Morgan County facility. Our Oconee County group shows down there because the footing is so bad in the arena at Heritage. And Amanda's right, our facility is so much nicer. It's covered, the stables are nicer, but we just can't put the horses in there because it's not safe for them. So thanks for listening to me and thanks for all you do and support the foundation.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fritz Brauner. I moved here from Los Angeles. And I'm a equestrian and I was very involved in Los Angeles. As a matter of fact, I helped create the Equestrian Bill of Rights and other things as far as to help educate with the community and work with the community. Uh, it went further where it created an equestrian advisory committee that was tied with the recreation as well. And the reason we picked this, this area is because it is rich in diversity of all different people and different disciplines of horse activities. And the uh, the benefits that we found uh, as far as there's a lot of other opportunities that when you have local people involved with use of this facility as well as drawing tourism, as well as drawing people from out of town to be able to come to this facility and have opportunities and events and different functions. And you know, with proper planning and working with the folks here, this is a fantastic opportunity to create a continuation of the equestrian cultural heritage that is so rich here and has such a great opportunity. And there's pl- plenty of data to show the positive economic impacts. Even when little girls or little boys are doing a show, they go to the dry cleaners, they stop at McDonald's, everything. They get the trailer that the horses are in, they pay insurance, they go to the mechanic to get the trucks fixed. There's the boots they buy down the street, the feed they buy over here. It's multiple, multiple effects. So it really is a great, great opportunity as far as improving this facility. And uh, there's so much more data and so much more opportunities. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Hello, my name's Sydney Bell. I'm not in the equestrian. But I did teach the crazy horse girl in high school and I can tell you, there's nothing crazier about her. She's very smart, uh, hardworking and I think she's casting a vision here that uh, goes beyond just the equestrian community. And I've lived in the county for a very long time. I think most of you up there know me. Um, I'm very interested in the agricultural history and heritage of this county and remember the 1970s when soybeans were king and remember hog farms, uh, remember Thomas Orchard, remember a lot of things that it's just natural that things change over time. But I do not believe for one minute that that means we have to sacrifice the rural integrity of the county, you know, the south end of the county. I believe that this facility affords some opportunities, not only to the equestrian community, uh, but to the community at large, those that enjoy the green space, but don't understand that it costs money to maintain that green space as a landowner. I think that it's almost like a field of dreams. I mean, if you build it, they will come. And I sincerely believe that when I look at the south end of the county and see the opportunities for current landowners down there who may want to uh, cash in the investment that they have in land when that's the only thing they really have. But rather than have to sell it for small tracks, uh, equestrian estate. Uh, I think that all of these things lend themselves to support uh, the vision that is being cast. I ask you to embrace it. Um, I want to commend you also. I came in and I saw the uh, work that has already been done. You know, this county needs recreational facilities. It needs the very things that you have in the back of the room. And I believe this is an extension of that. Uh, I don't think it's going to cost anything in terms of conflict with other uses of the facility. I just, I just look at it as a good, uh, positive vision that's being cast for the future of the, of the county, especially the south end of the county and for that portion of this community um, who are equestrians and for our young people. And now my passion has been for young people for the past 35 years. And I, I truly would like to see that facility brought up, uh, up to snuff, up to the, its potential uh, for to be just a, uh, just a shining example of what can be done um, in a uh, county that is growing. And it is, this has a rural tradition and rural history, um, but also has uh, growth that is going on. So I thank you for listening to me. I thank you for what you already have done and ask that you would just embrace this vision and give it some serious consideration. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Shorter. Uh, I'm not here just because of Heritage Park. Uh, I'm a believer in connecting trails. I'm actually a resident of Albert County. And I moved to this area from pretty far away. Uh, I've been through these issues before. Uh, I'm from Los Angeles. I was president and vice president for many years of the Hanson Dam Park Advisory Board. Um, which is an equestrian area in Los Angeles and um, we were able to improve the area, but we always felt that the horses were the canaries in the cage. They were the canaries of the community because if you lose the horses, you lose the space. And so, one of the things that was very important in our area was that any project that was created, there was mitigation within that project. And that mitigation required the producers or the developers to make trails. And they don't necessarily have to be just only equestrian trails because everybody uses trails that equestrians use. And the good part about this is the equestrians don't want to have asphalt or concrete. They want to have decomposed granite or crushed granite, as you guys call it here. We call it decomposed granite. Uh, anyhow, uh, those trails can connect and my vision, hopefully your vision, is that we can connect trails all the way to Albert County so that we could ride our horses from Albert County to Oconee County. Wouldn't that be awesome? And actually, all the way up to Pennsylvania, New York, whatever. We have the Western States Trail that that our community literally connected to and went from Mexico to Canada. Why can't we do that on the east coast? And why can't Georgia be the one that does it? So let's keep the canaries alive. Let's keep the open spaces alive. And let's connect trails because the trails that anybody can walk, we were talking about recreation, recreation. Everybody loves to walk. You can ride bikes on these trails. Everybody has mountain bikes and you can ride your horses. So let's do it, guys. Thank you.
Um, I think I'm a little too short for this, but good evening. My name is Molly Smith. I'm a high schooler here in Oconee County. Um, I've been a resident here for almost 16 years and have kept my horses boarded in South Oconee for around eight years. Um, I'm a part of the local 4H teams. We're attending the national competition in Colorado in um, January for our accomplishments. And Heritage Park, it would be a great place, a great facility for many people to use. And it just be, I'd love to have it as an area to use for many horse activities in the future. Thank you.
Hi, thank you again for your service to the citizens of the county. My name is Robin Kemmer Smith. I and my husband Bob Smith own Covenant Grove Farm in Watkinsville. It's a boarding farm. We have 12 horses there, 12 borders. Um, we've used Heritage Park in the past. The trails are wonderful. Um, I can say the last time we were there, we passed not only hikers, but bikers and other people on horses. Um, it's just a great, great resource. It's one that can be better developed and the work that Amanda has done with her group to develop the Athens area horse community shows that there is a real groundswell of support for this development. Um, my husband actually developed the plans that, that are drafted back there. Um, and I'm really hopeful that you'll take this seriously and see this not just as a benefit to the horse community, which personally I'm crazy horse lady. Um, but agriculturally too, you know, for 4H for development of our youth. I mean, it, it would just be a fantastic opportunity for I mean, it, it would just be a fantastic opportunity for not much investment. So thank you.
My name's Kathy Jones, um, and I'm a crazy horse woman along with the rest of them. I've lived in the county for about 22 years and I came here from the Alpharetta area. And I came here because Alpharetta 22 years ago was becoming not very horse friendly. Lots of development, we were losing property and it was just becoming more and more difficult. Luckily I got a trailer. I can do back and forth. I can be there, but Oconee is sitting in a position where it could grow, um, its horse community even more, um, than it's been growing recently. And I don't know if you all are aware, but the, um, horse lesson business has expanded hugely during COVID. It was one of the more, well, it was certainly a COVID proof, um, uh, business in that kids were outside. They weren't playing softball and soccer, but they were coming to horseback riding lessons. Those kids are now riding horses and horse shows. Uh, I'm participating in a horse show this weekend that we frankly would love to have in Oconee County, but there isn't a facility large enough for us. So we are going down to Conyers, which means all these hotel dollars are also going with us down to Conyers. All the restaurant dollars are going with us down to Conyers as well as the clean, dry cleaning and everything else that'll stay in Oconee. But the big money is being spent down in Conyers this weekend. Our organization, the Athens Area Hunter Jumper Association, Kim Olson's here. She's one of the original members. We operate about 10 to 12 horse shows a year along with this major horse show that we're doing this weekend. We've outgrown the horse show facilities that we have in, in the area. Primarily the horse shows have been at private farms and they've been wonderful. And it's a great learning opportunity for kids, not only, you know, to learn how to ride, but also how to compete and how to compete well. Um, but we've simply expanded to the point where the, the, the local facilities, the local shows, um, are not, the, the local farms aren't able to manage the numbers that we have. So Heritage Park is a perfect location. Um, it has certainly the land size that we need. Um, and I think actually if some development were put in there, I know for a fact this horse show this weekend would come to the Heritage Park. And I think an awful lot of the local horse shows that we do every year would also be interested in coming to the park. So, um, again, it's a, especially with the development that's happening in Oconee now. We are only getting more and more middle school and elementary school age kids, and they're going to be riding horses. And those kids can move on up in the program. It'd be nice if we could keep them in Oconee when they want to go ahead and compete. So thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Trey Candelario. Um, I am a horse owner. They are my children. Um, but I did want to speak tonight, a bit of a different light to shed on this. Um, I know finance is a very big part of what you all do and kind of deciding what the needs of the county are and how best to allocate money. Um, and there's always going to be a want from everybody in the community. People want pickleball and tennis courts. I'm not diminishing that. Um, but I think that there's a very real return of investment that comes with the horse community that may not be realized by a lot of people in the community. So, um, I am, as I said, Trey Candelario. I am a member of Young Female Farmers. It's a business my family and I started in 2006. Um, and although it is a very small farm by comparison to some, uh, my sisters and I, a few years ago were actually named number five in the world for changing the face of food. We have groups come in from all over the world. We just had a group come from Austria to tour the property and see the horses. And, um, we had Carhartt actually come out and want to see the property. And, um, they asked us when they came, where can we shoot else in the county besides just your farm? Um, I actually called Amanda because I know that they have a beautiful property. Um, and we were in talks with them to go to Allison Creek, but they actually left Oconee because they said there wasn't a place to shoot that was large enough. And that kind of glorified Oconee in a way that they could put in their catalog. And that's very disappointing because Heritage would have been a beautiful place for that if it was a facility that had a bit more luster. Um, and I think that that's worth really taking the time to look into because uh, not to, not to brag a little bit, but, um, finance is kind of my thing. Um, I am a graduate of Harvard, uh, in applied mathematics and law. And Amanda and I actually sat down and talked about her plans and completely in a, in an unbiased way, I know I do benefit from this, but just from a professional standpoint, there's a lot of merit to what she's worked out. And I think it would be a huge disservice to Oconee if it was merely seen as a horse issue because it's not. It's a massive, massive market that could bring so much to Oconee. And I would love to see Oconee flourish with that. As a resident of 20 years, I love Oconee. And I would love to have the tourism and the love from all over the world for Oconee and for our business and tourism, for 4Hers, for older horse people, for me, for, for everybody. So I think it's worth your time and hopefully, hopefully you take a little bit of time to really think about what everybody said tonight. Thank you.
My name's Dale Faulkner and I'm an Oconee County resident. I've been here for 50 years, know most of you guys, but um, I just want to say I am so proud of Amanda and all the work she's put into this and I greatly appreciate it. Um, I've enjoyed Heritage Park for years. Heritage has a huge volunteer base. Um, we enjoy volunteering with Lisa wherever she is. Um, she's great to work with and your, your local horse people that are just trail riders and local people, they all love Heritage Park too. And they support horses in every way. And we like to see the different horse groups and it's great to see the young people out there. And it's great to see a young person that is so interested in this. So I hope you will consider it and thank you all for all you do.
I'm Bill Gottes and I'm a resident of Canyon Creek subdivision. I, I love horses and, uh, people that ride them I think are, are good, but I want to talk about something a bit different. Uh, being in the northern part of the, uh, county there, we have lots of development going on there and lots of clear cutting. Uh, we're losing a lot of our forest lands there. And so my thought was, uh, do we have a mechanism in place that we can, uh, do some reforestation? We've got a lot of fallow land, uh, here in the county. That's just, uh, weeds and, and gnarly old, uh, pine trees growing up. I'm wondering, is there anything in place, uh, through the forestry commission or, uh, any other agency that, uh, is in the business of replanting, uh, trees? Uh, because, uh, one of the great attractions to this county really is our, our landscape. And so, uh, uh, if you have, uh, any kind of thoughts on that, I'd, I'd love to hear that. Thank you.
So far she does have a, they have programs for reforestation. That's up to the property owner on that. So, um, when something is developed, we do have a landscape code that requires certain amount of, you know, green, green space and, and tree planting to put that back. Uh, so, but if somebody's, you know, logging their, their property, there's no requirement for them to go back and, uh, replant. But most of them will do that at, at some point in time, just to get use of the land. So, did you have something on the horses? Go ahead.
Because we travel in herds. So we're all crazy horse people, all in one herd. Different disciplines, different, you know, we all have different points of view. Um, I was one of the, I was the founder of Athens Area Home, uh, Hunter Jumper Association that Kathy Jones was talking about. Um, it's been around for 26 years now. Seeing now I'm, kids I taught now have kids and I see them out and it's just kind of crazy to see them bringing their kids back to us. It just cycles through. This is a, like everyone said, an agricultural county and the benefits to having a property that could actually make money for the county. Um, I want to hold horse shows. There's no place to hold them. You know, I sold my farm last year, would love to do something, Oconee run shows here for Athens Area Horse Hunter Jumper Association or, you know, have a place to bring my kids to practice and compete at other associations. So I'm, I'm on the train. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and close. I didn't expect that many people to show up. I'm so honored and, and talk. I'm so honored. Um, the horse community doesn't make requests without offering to help shoulder the burden. You'll find us to be hard workers and dedicated to our causes. Um, if you guys are here to support the heritage agricultural, um, improvements and you're able to stand, can you stand? You can ask Director DeValle about the volunteers maintaining, maintaining the trails hundreds of hours every year. We're willing to help raise funds and shoulder the burden because we know it's the right thing to do for our community in the county. We need your continued support. You guys have been fantastic already. Um, thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Also, I want to say I brought some, um, of the Parks Foundation cards. So if anyone's interested in donating to the Parks Foundation, you can come and pick up a QR code from up here.
Just a second. Let me talk just a second. We got, may have some comments on that. So if you want to say we're, uh, really excited that the, the plan's coming forward. I, I think when Amanda first met me, she was, she was pregnant with the, with the little one. And we, we talked then about having a vision and a plan for what, what should happen. You know, we've always heard comments over the years, we need to make improvements at Heritage Park. But depending on who you talk to, that might be different things. So y'all getting together and coming up with that, that plan and we're in the process of adopting all this. That's, that's awesome. You're doing, taking the right steps at the right time. Um, and then we'll put that in our, in our, in our programming and I mean, it, the fact you're willing to help raise money and do that's, that's, that's a big deal. So we appreciate that part of it because funds are limited. Just like we're talking about the, the tennis courts in, at OVP. I mean, they, they've been in the work since 2009, 15th lost, uh, and talked about since the park was originally, uh, and, and similar things they're saying, you know, economic development. But the funds are just limited. So the fact that y'all are willing to, to help and work toward that, that, that's awesome. But the, the main thing is having the vision. So we know what to be working toward and, uh, so, so it's, it's awesome. We're glad to, to see the plan coming forward.
I confess that I feel a little bit like the new year old man that walked into the church board meeting. And he didn't really know what was going on. He just heard him talking about spending a lot of money on a chandelier. And after they talked about it and talked about $10,000, he finally stood up before they voted. And he said, what I want to know is why we need a chandelier when there's nobody here that knows how to play it and nobody can spell it. And so, and what we really need is lights in the church. So anyway, I feel a little bit like that because I didn't come up here to talk to y'all about the horse issue. Um, but I have to, before I talk to you about what I want to say, I want to give my total, wholehearted uh, support to the whole equestrian idea for our county. Uh, I have a granddaughter up in Pennsylvania who rides horses. She's 14 years old and I have watched her for the last seven or eight years and traveled up to the Kentucky Horse Park in Pennsyl, in Kentucky and watched her ride ponies and now graduated to horses. She rides all over the Northeast. Uh, she stays out of trouble. It's the best thing that ever happened to her. And what I'm praying is she's going to get a scholarship to ride for the University of Georgia and be down here close to Papa. But I, I can't think of nothing better for this county than to embrace the equestrian community because I have seen firsthand what they did up in Tryon, North Carolina. Uh, I visited there. My granddaughter rode and it was an area out in the middle of the sticks and nowhere in North Carolina. And I have watched the equestrian community, uh, totally change for the better, uh, that area. Because now it's got a big horse show that the, there's, there's businesses, uh, have sprung up around the horse shows that are there. And, uh, you can't, as far as a class of people, I can't, I can't think of a better class of people than the equestrian community. So my endorsement to them. Uh, what I came to talk to you about is a couple of things that are a little bit higher on the priority list as far as, uh, you know, if I was, when I make my budget at home, I have to decide what are, you know, things I can't live without. And then what are the luxuries? And those two things are water and internet. Uh, I came, the last time I came to one of these meetings, you guys, we were talking, and it's been a while. We were talking about how excited we all were about this new government grant that was going to provide internet to the rural parts of our county. And we had a map and it showed, you know, where the federal, where the federal parts of it were that were the supposedly going to get the internet first. And then you guys had, uh, added local money to that, as I understand it, uh, to extend rural internet to places that weren't on the federal map. And, you know, you guys had, uh, come up with a grant or a bond. I don't know how you funded it, but you had put money toward, uh, adding more people to, to the rural internet program. And my frustration and what I want to know from you guys is, are we still back where we were, you know, a year ago or whenever it was? And I know you guys had put, and I've talked to Chuck about this and he's been good enough to take my calls because I aggravate him about it pretty regularly, but are we getting any closer? Who, who's, i- is one of y'all in charge of kind of pushing Charter Spectrum along? Or do they report to you, you know, monthly or weekly and let you know where we are? And so I guess I'm just as open ended. I'd really love to just to hear from y'all, where are we on the whole internet thing?
So we kind of hit it right before you came in. Uh, we talked about it. We do, we talk about it every town hall meeting and some of our other meetings. So they, they have determined the, where the trunk line is going to come in, which is going to be on the Farmington area. And they'll be branching out from Farmington on the south end to start with. There's 28 projects, they call them, where they'll go out and they'll, we don't have the sequence on that, but they, they will be starting construction before the end of the year to put that trunk line in and set up the base. And then we'll be going out from there. We hope to have on December 6th meeting. We hope to have an update from Charter with a little better timeline on, on the flow of that. Uh, but, but it is, it's a very, uh, challenging project to say the least. If it was easy, you know, the incumbents would have done this years ago. Uh, but they got mostly engineering done. They're working on permitting. You got the whole supply chain issue they're dealing with as well. They've got a contractor on board who's going to be dedicated to Oconee County once construction starts to complete the entire project.
Okay. If the, it was first, like we had talked about, you know, that there was a federal map that the federal government gave money to the, to chart for them. And then you, as I understand it, you guys added to that. But where are, you know, I happen to be on that federal and I'm a little bit further, uh, west than Farmington. So now I'm wondering, oh wait, are they all going to do the whole south end and then skip my little, you know, we got little pockets of no internet where, for some of us that are not so far south really. Uh, so do you have any idea about how that's going to work?
Uh, yeah. So this, there's several different, there's some areas where they can, where a line ends where they can pick up and just run. So a lot of it's timing with the permitting and then the, how quickly the supplies come in that they need. So they're trying to stockpile it and schedule it. So once the contractor gets here, he's got steady work until Oconee County is done. So. And then, then just like the hurricane, uh, that hit down in Florida, they, all the crews get pulled off to go down there and the, the engineering stuff has to go. So there's just been a lot of things that impacted how long this is taking, but we're very, very close. We, we anticipate shoveling the ground before interview.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That's good news. Um, kind of a related question to that is that, you know, I got my feelings hurt real bad here a few weeks ago because there was a big, uh, company coming right down my road, Little Gober Road out in the middle of nowhere. And they were laying huge conduits and a fiber optic trunk line from Atlanta to Charleston. They say it's going to South America. I think it's Google or some of those, you know, one of those big. But I actually talked to the contractor and I've looked up this company, DC Blocks that's doing this. They're an internet provider. They talk about using their, uh, conduit for Comcast or Charter Spectrum or whoever wants to rent their conduit can provide fiber optic internet. And the conduit is there. It's literally in the gray. It's literally in the ground. Is there something we can, I mean, I know this wasn't available probably, wasn't even being talked about when y'all voted and you know, did the Charter Spectrum deal. But is there any way y'all can go back to Charter Spectrum and say, hey, there's the conduit. Why are you going to either? It makes no sense to me for them to hang a overhead fiber optic cable to my house when there's a conduit in the ground. You, you see what I'm saying? And I, I have y'all talked to DC Blocks? Are they renting that right away from the county or how does that work?
So there's no utilities are allowed to use the right of way. They just have to get permits to put it in there. So we know where it's at. So there's no, no income stream there. My understanding is that line is just for backhaul, back and forth. There'll be no trunking off of that. Charter is aware of that line. And so where all that works out in their business model and their timing, I don't know.
Surely a charter knows this because I actually talked to the contractor there and I, I can show you the cables. The trunk lines are two big, huge conduits, but there's three small conduits in that same ditch. And when I asked the guy, what's that for? He said, that's for internet expansion, you know, future expansion of the internet. You know, it's for private, local residential internet. So there's conduits there. It just don't make sense to me for, you know, it's almost like the left hand and right hand don't know what's going on sometimes.
Well, a lot of them are in competition. So there's not, whether they work together or not. There, there's a huge line running down Collin Ferry Road that's been there for three or four years. And the person that has that line says it's for backhaul. Now you can get service also of it for $650 a month. But who's, who's got the money to do that? So there's an economic side of it too. But we, we got the plan in place. They're, they're working diligently. It's not going as fast as any of us want it to go. I'm, I'm, I'm on Elder Road.
And do you feel my pain? You got no internet?
Exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's, and you know, it gets to be real financial pain because when you go, go try to sell your house without internet and see what happens, you know, it don't happen. But just to, before I let that go, DC Blocks is not a public utility. They're a private company. And Google is not a public utility. Google is a private company. And the guy who was burying that cable specifically told me they had to pay for that right of way. And that they were coming through this county because it was cheaper than going down I-20 or a major highway, a federal highway, because there were more permits and it costs more. So just FYI, y'all might could call Google up and say, hey, how much are you going to pay us for that? You know, cable you got running through our county. Anyway. All right. So off of internet, water. Where are we on the whole Hard Labor Creek mess? I know we've got a big investment in 28% of that reservoir down there. Uh, don't look like we're going to need it. I, I hope y'all embrace this equestrian concept and we never need it because we have large tracks and you know, no high density housing. With this economic downturn we're in now, we're probably going to be back like we were in 2007, if not worse. Where development's going to screech to a halt. And I have seen those population projections in that original permit application. They bear no real relation to reality today. So I guess what I'm going to make a statement and I'd love your response. My statement is we don't need that water. Ever. I, I'm just going to make that statement. Uh, as far as I can tell, this county will never need that water unless we do a project like Rivian that needs five million gallons a day, which I hope nobody on this board would support. So my point is, I know we're kind of between a rock and a hard place in my view. Uh, we've already invested in it. We thought we were going to need it because we were growing. But unless our, we change our plan, I've seen the plan that y'all have for our county and that growth plan don't allow for high density residential, you know, we're not talking about 10 story apartment complexes in Oak County, as far as I know. And without that high density of residential growth, I don't see this population ever needing that water for residential drinking purposes. And so I'm sitting here going, we're already paying for, I, I don't, how much have we already paid for down there? Do y'all know off the top of your head? How much we've already spent for the reservoir part of it? And I know we have bonds. We have a financial obligation right now uh, that has to get paid off. But my, my feeling is how do we get out of this mess? That's what I'm wanting to know from y'all and how, I know y'all have, some of y'all are on that board. And some of you have, uh, I saw the video of Mr. David Thompson from Walton County telling us that he's going to spend two, three, $400 million down there on a treatment plant and pumps. And he's going to run public water to the whole county of Walton County. And the intergovernmental agreement that I have read, unless it's been amended, puts us on the hook for 28 cents on every dollar David Thompson spends. That's a huge number. And I just want to know, are we going to be liable for that? If not, is, I mean, I heard him, he had the arrogance to look at some of y'all and basically say, well, we won't force you to pay that right away. We'll just treat it like a loan and charge you interest on your part of it. So that floored me. I mean, the idea that another county commissioner could obligate the citizens of this county for tens of, tens and tens of millions of dollars is frightening to me. I mean, I just, and I don't know where we are. And I'd love to hear y'all's feelings. I mean, are y'all still on board? Do you think we still need to be a part of it? Are there options to get out of it? I mean, I know there's some other counties that probably could use the water before we do. Can we sell our position to them? You know, you see what I'm saying? I'm just asking. And I'll just shut up and listen. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, we are part of Hard Labor Creek and that was, decision was made way back. Uh, Walton County is in need of water. So they are wanting to move forward with the treatment plant for the reservoir. We're working on expansion at Bear Creek now, which will give us a, a, a real good cushion for the future. I can't say right now, we'll never need that water. I can show you pictures of Bear Creek that where it was almost empty and we were then days of running out of drinking water in, in Clark and Oak County uh, because of that drought. And you're seeing what, I mean, whoever thought the Mississippi River would look like it looks right now? So it's more about drought, uh, coverage than anything. We've had some pretty frank conversations with Walton County. They got to have it now. They understand our position. We've studied our financial, uh, created a financial model for our operation. We feel like the maximum we can put into the treatment plant is 12 million. So anything over that Walton County has said they would, would be covering. It's never been decided whether it's long, all that's still got to be worked out about when it comes time to buy into the rest of the plant, what that's going to look like. What makes it very attractive for us to stay in the game right now is the $42 million grant from Governor Kemp. That was a game changer on the, the amount of money each county was going to have to invest. So that's why we're proceeding forward cautiously right now. Right now we have a RFP out, a design firm to, to design the treatment plant. And then once they're on board, we'll go with a construction manager at risk. And those two groups will work together, come up with some final pricing. Right now the pricing is, we've got a huge number estimated just based on what's happening in the market. So once we get a better number, we'll have a better understanding as well. We've also have applied for funding, uh, from the state for the Bear Creek, uh, expansion. So if we're able to get some cash, uh, from the ARP money for that, that's going to greatly improve our ability to, to participate in, in Hard Labor Creek. Right now, we're not looking for any, any way to get out of Hard Labor Creek. Uh, we're, we're content with keeping that for the future. Because where else are you going to go? There's, there's counties in Northeast Georgia right now that are trying to get together to figure out how they're going to provide water for their communities, um, over the future. So having that reservoir is, is a, is a really good, good plan for the Oak County County at this point.
Um, everyone, oh, that's wild. As long as I'm on the board, we're not paying anything to you, period. And even more, they're going ahead and do the plan. So when they go, I would see us, you know, and kind of the deal, they give water to Walton County, two thousand, two thousand and five, we're going to do that. So when we buy identity, we buy into it, not paying anything. That's, that's definitely the fact. You and I personally, I've heard against the original deal with Walton County, because of the standard that's going on in Walton County. But I had never said, even back then, the county did not need water down the road. I didn't like what I saw of Walton County. And Chairman Thompson is saying what he wants to. It doesn't do things that I can. I feel bad about that. Anybody else is prepared. But we're not going as long as Walton County. And I'm hung from another county down there, needs water, Walton County won't pay what that share does, but not paying anything. I don't care what they say. I don't know how many people were spread by it. But there's going to be more, I know the issue originally was taking water from the river. That's going to happen. Whether Oak County County is involved there or not, Walton County will take the water because they got permission to do so. So that's going to happen, whether it was Walton or Walton, Black Hill, Walton, Oak County, why is it not that good? Going to weather. I don't see us selling our share because if Chairman says water in this state is pushing, we don't have a river that comes into, to our state. It wasn't, that was created outside of state. All our water sources were created inside of the state. We're not like somebody in other states, giving big rivers coming through. So I don't see us selling our share. You know, we, we decided years ago, my two days, the river was going to be down, our show was. So the county voted on Richard Dupo, go in Walton County. He might go back to it. And just the same, this commission involved properties down on Fort Worth, one for a future super plan. He probably never been around when that plan didn't fill, but for a government down the road will have a source for this super plan. And they have water sources other than Bear Creek. So, you know, what I just said to you, they may not have heard me, you and I called you tonight about, oh, I don't know how you feel, I don't know how you did that way back. But the county voted to do the government. That's where we are. And I always say a firm about Walton County not forcing Oak County County to get into something they can't handle at that time. That's where we are, we're not strapped by Walton County.
No, but Chuck, aren't we obligated under that intergovernmental agreement to do 28 cents on the dollar or whatever they've been, been amended?
I think so. We're not getting it until we get it. They can go ahead and do theirs. We're the 12 million. But not the whole shooting ranch. We'll pay that when county government will pay that when the government needs the water.
I hear what you're saying and I understand y'all are capping your investment at 12 billion right now. I, I guess I personally question whether we need to spend that 12 million for water we may or not ever need. But my point is there's a legal document out there that's part of that permit. And that legal document is called an intergovernmental agreement between this county and Walton County. And that intergovernmental agreement is a legal document and it's specifically said that we will share 28% of the cost of any improvements down there on that reservoir, which includes the treatment plant and all that that Walton's talking about doing. And I'm concerned, I hear what you're saying and you don't, you know, open my dear body is kind of your attitude and I appreciate that, that, you know, a, a good lawyer, if David Thompson hires a good lawyer, I can't see us a good way around not being legally, financially responsible for 28 cents on the dollar if they helped us too. And I don't trust David Thompson as far as I can, I'm not here to demand that elected to Walton County, but if they hire him, he's going to go ahead and pay. Say that again.
We'll have a better, we'll have a better return. So I'm telling you, we're not paying the whole shooting ranch. We're not needing water and you know, we need water.
There's more angles, that's what you're saying. There's more angles in the whole contract. Yes, we're at 28%, but that doesn't mean we got to jump in with building the plant originally, you know, Walton County needs the water and that. Then you jump in later. But we have, I mean, like, like Chairman Daniel said, we had a state gave us $42 million. I mean, why would we not jump on board with that if they're putting $42 million into, to give us a resource down the road that we're absolutely going to need down the road somewhere? No question about it.
Yeah, I will say that both county, counties are working together as partners in this. Um, they understand our position. If there needs to be a change to intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement, that change will, will take place. Um, so there, there's no pressure from, uh, from anybody in Walton County to force us to any other, um, direction in that which we're going now. So anybody else?
Dan McGee, Locklin Circle, Park Mess plans are great. Fantastic. Uh, so LAS Park, hopefully it's on a, a good timeline. Uh, I got a ninth grader. I, I think he might be in college before it's done, but, uh, OVP is just jammed to the gills. Um, Director Duvall's running the biggest park track department east of Gwinnett. Numbers are, are huge. It's getting to the point, uh, we're tapped out. So that would be a huge help. Walking track is great. All ages, old guys like me, youth meets, masters meets. The turf field is good. I strongly recommend two or three, uh, to have tournaments, to have lacrosse, to have soccer. Right now a little bit of rain, got to cancel OVP. But there's one turf field there, hopefully three. I think it's going to need a lot more parking unless you really kind of schedule and have just a few events at a time. But very happy you guys are doing this. But OVP is jammed up and, uh, you're a victim of their own success. Programs are so big, football, soccer, lacrosse, everything else where it's just, it's just really, really tough at night to get in and out of the park without traffic light. So I'm glad kids are outside using it off the computer. The LAS is going to alleviate a lot of stuff. I know a lot about return investment parks and rec, 35 years doing it. There's real return investment and there might be horses up too. But, uh, when hosting tournaments, when it's restaurant hotels, large numbers, you know, I already host, uh, big softball and other events, baseball, but, uh, great stuff, walking track, turf field. Hope there's enough parking. I just hope it's not a, you know, you said, I asked you a couple of years ago, you said five to 25, five to 20 years. Hopefully it's closer to five than, than 20. But, uh, Lisa's doing a great job, her staff. We're tapped out. We need that field space. Thanks.
Hey, I'm Jeff Hood. Lived here 29 years. Three quick questions. One is what's the status of the traffic light going in up the street on Union Church Road at 53? Is the varsity still coming here behind Hobby Lobby? And then, um, and this is really more for the, um, Industrial Development Authority, but John, I know you're on that board. But can you kind of speak to the decision last week to give away to the state 13 acres of land on McNutt Creek Road and, um, 316? And maybe what the benefit is to the county? Thank you.
So, so the traffic light at Union Church Road, the, the equipment's ordered as soon as it gets here.
As soon as it gets here, we'll put it up. So this, that's a joint project between State Department of Transportation and O'Conne County. They're buying the equipment. We actually have a bid out now for installation, so by the time it gets here, we should be ready to go. There's no timeline, we're not being given any, being given any timeline on delivery. And I think that's just a part of the supply chain issue that we're currently experiencing. My understanding is that varsity is still planning to come. They're right now working on their location in Bethlehem. When that one's done, I think we're next on the list. So we're looking forward to that. That's, that's one of the most asked questions. Now that Costco's open, it's probably gonna be the number one, uh, question. And then, the IDA did donate 13 acres to the state of Georgia. The DDS has received funding in their, in the last budget from Governor Kemp to relocate O'Conne County. They were looking for property. Where they were looking was, was very expensive. It would've taken all their budget to get that. We opened up conversations with them. We have 13 acres located on 316 near McNutt's Creek. There's been no, no interest generated in that piece of property for several years. And we feel like it's a good idea to partner with the state, um, on this project. That allows them to meet some of their goals and visions. I do believe we're gonna see additional, um, agencies locate on that as well. They'll be, that will be very, very beneficial to O'Conne County. And also, the Department of Driver Services is working with Department of Transportation on access to that piece of property, which is very limited now. Once McNutt Creek goes over, our ability to sell that for any kind of economic development is gonna diminish even lower than we have now. So access, partner with the state for some future investment there as well, is why the IDA moved forward with that.
So, this is Sharon Thalen. Do you have any information on the timeline for, uh, development of that driver services center and, and access to that facility?
My understanding is, is driver services is gonna move as quickly as they can. So the IDA voted last week, the closing will occur sometime over the next few months. And then, my understanding is they're working on their site plan, and hopefully we'll be moving ver- fairly quickly with that. Until the interchanges are put in on 316, they will access off McNutt's Creek. So, the whole McNutt's Creek from McNutt's Creek interchange and back up to Diles Mill, the state's still looking at all their options on, on how that's, uh, gonna play out based on input that they've received from O'Conne County. So we don't, we don't have a timeline on when that's gonna be presented or what that's gonna look like in the final, final stages. But they are working on it. We've had some calls over the last few months where they're, you know, asking for input and we're, they're working diligently toward it, but we don't have a timeline on when it's gonna happen. Yes. So the new park is actually functioning as a land application system right now. So we have to complete our upgrade at Cause Creek in order to decommission that, that park. And then, once that done, we'll have to, we'll have to go in and do some, uh, some grading, take out some pipes and, uh, remove those two sediment ponds that are, that are in there and dispose of them correctly. So we're under, we're in process for upgrading Cause Creek, but that's a two-year build out from where we are now. And we still have a third phase that we'll need to look at as well. So it's two to three years before the property even becomes available, um, for use.
Here. There is no time limit. I, I remember you telling me that, Chairman Daniel. I just want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Horton and Mr. Arden, Harden, because of your fantabulous wins in the election recently. Not that you ran against anybody, but you received 85 and 86% of the vote. So you have the mandate of the citizenry, and that is really nice to see. As you know, elections are my thing. So, uh, what I do want to say is that, this is kind of a public service announcement, there is a runoff election because, uh, the US Senate race, no one received over 50%. So there is a, a runoff. And I poll watched every single day of early voting and on Election Day. And I encourage anybody, uh, who is voting in this county, who votes at all, to please get involved in the election system. Because citizen input is important, citizens' eyes on the process is important. There were a few issues in our, our county, not serious issues, because our elections department is very, very well-run, very well-run, and the people are very honorable. There was one incident where a poll worker, uh, was refusing a poll watcher access to the data and observation that is required by law, but that was addressed. There was an also, also an incident where, uh, the wrong sort of paper was loaded into the printers. Our systems are supposed to be able to detect paper that is not ballot paper, but that system failed because apparently it's turned off in all 150 counties, 59 counties in the state. So that is a situation that's going to have to be looked into. And we still vote on an electronic system that is illegal. And by illegal, I mean it violates two sections of the Georgia code, which requires that the system generate a reader, a voter verifiable printed ballot. Everybody who gets a printed ballot after work, after voting on the machines should read it to make sure that their selections are showing up in the written portion. However, I think a lot of voters already know that the votes are actually tabulated from the QR code, not from the written word. But that's the system that we have right now until the Secretary of State stops, uh, stops, uh, resisting the lawsuit and the judgment of the circuit court judge who ruled it illegal, as long as they keep, uh, I don't know what you call it, appealing, appealing the decision. And they've been doing that now for two years. The case is still active. So until, uh, we can get rid of these machines, I urge everyone to read your ballot, um, before you, uh, put it in the scanner, so that you know what it is you're voting for, at least the printing part of it. So that if we should ever have access to actually look at those ballots and read that printed portion and, uh, verify what the vote was for, uh, until we get access to that, which the Secretary of State is also denying us, um, we will just have to hope and pray that that QR code is reflecting what exactly we wanted. And I just want people to know that. The runoff is on December 6th. I really, it doesn't really matter to me who you voted for. It does matter to me that your vote counts and that you take your obligation as a citizen seriously and do show up to vote. Early voting, I think, starts on the 21st. I think the 21st, and then 28. Okay, thank you. The 28th for one week, just that week. So far, there's no mandatory Saturday voting. Uh, I believe that's being, uh, contested in the courts because some people really do like that Saturday voting, and it is convenient for people. So, um, early voting is that one week, and then, uh, the election is December 6th. And right now, early voting is only eight to five. A lot of people showed up after the polls closed or before the, way before the polls opened, not understanding that it was eight to five during early voting. And then on Election Day, it will be seven to seven. So.
All right, your last chance for questions, comments, or emotional outbursts. Hearing none. Thank y'all so much. This is a great turnout, great discussion. We'll be putting our dates out. You need something?
I'm gonna say one thing.
Okay.
We were talking about the water. Horses drank water, it kind of brings us back to the subject. On any given day, heritage is used. There's horse trailers, there's vehicles out there with bike racks on the back, there's people hiking, and for the most part, the wooded area is probably one of the, um, financially, it, it, the government basically doesn't spend any money on that. It's all done by volunteers. I don't ride horses, but unfortunately, my wife does, and I am a professional volunteer. And I know that Jean Bersani, Lisa, and Dale and I spend 200 hours a year out there with my tractor, my loaders, my UTVs, my chainsaws, my brush cutters, keeping the horse trails in a, in a condition that is conducive to ride. A lot of people use the trails. But, um, and I know Lisa's limited crew don't have the time to be out there to spend, but we do, the horse people do, because they enjoy it. And, um, so with a lot of times, you know, we just spend a lot of time trying to do our own thing. We don't, I know in tennis, your pickleball, you don't have the volunteers out there keeping up the facilities like we do. But can anybody remember why that covered arena was built initially? Can anybody remember what, what it was there for?
For the showing of that.
Huh? It was an agricultural building that is the least-used building that the government owns. And the reason being that nothing has been done to it. It's a wonderful facility, bathroom stalls that is laying there dormant. So I know Amanda's done a lot of work, and the thing she's brought to you, you go ka-ching, 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 ka-ching. But look at it as a diamond in the rough, try to prioritize all of the elements that